Good evening and welcome to the May 5th City Council meeting. If you'd join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Ms. Rolofsky, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Luke Kellyer.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number three. This is citizens' comments, opportunity for those here to address the council for up to three minutes if you just come up and state your name and your address.
Hello, I am Catherine Kane. I live at 17358 Elquid Avenue, Lakeville. Excuse me.
You can pull the mic down, honey.
Okay.
So it's easier to hear.
All right, thank you.
Don't worry about it, just take your time.
Right, am I just to honor the timeline, I just have to read from my papers? So please excuse me, I just want to thank you, council, for having us here and serving our community. Councilmember Michelle Volk, thank you for your time speaking with me on the phone Thursday evening last week. I'm a registered nurse and care for people and want the best for all. Here along with my husband and some neighbors behind me is encouraged by one of the police officers who was called to our HOA property on Friday, the third time police were called in four days. We're hoping this city, here's a picture of our HOA. We're hoping the city will place no fishing signs on the pond behind our homes or at the very least on the half of the pond where homeowners in our HOA reside. Most of our homeowners are retired, many are elderly, some disabled and in very fragile health. We're all for kids fishing and it was good to see at first, but now it's become a source of stress and anxiety. The kids and teens trespass on our HOA private property, urinate in plain sight and leave garbage, including a residential garbage container that was in the pond for days. Last summer, they targeted the ducks and baby ducks with their lures and threw rocks at the snapping turtles. Since the bike path was put on the other side of the pond, the foot traffic, a number of kids and teens and now adults coming onto our HOA private property in our backyards to access the pond is increasing. Along with their disrespect, they prefer the homeowner or private property side as they're as sad versus the other side of the pond without homes where they could easily fish. It's a small enough pond they can, can and do cast across. At first, they respected our request to please fish on the other side of the pond rather than our backyards mere feet from or close enough from our windows so they can stare in and wave and gesture at us. Now that's a trend to stay on our HOA private property side. For an example, I got up at six o'clock one morning to see a tall male teenager outside my window staring and waving at me in my nightgown. I'm not alone, others have told me strangers stare in and wave at them. One of my neighbors that's here right now had that experience. Another day, six teens alone were behind our home. And most recently, myself and another homeowner observed a young male teen pointing his cellphone at our homes, appearing to be videoing and taking pictures of us. I've got some pictures of that, the teen with a cellphone and looking at us. Anyway, just, I don't know how, if these can show up very well. But, oh, I'm sorry, I can, I see now, they're upside down. Now I see, I just looked up for the first time.
It's okay.
So there's a few that would fit on there, but okay. Anyway, I think that I did send videos of this to councilmember Michelle. And myself and other neighbors are feeling violated and vulnerable and it makes it difficult to sleep and we're reluctant to go on our patio to water our plants and grill when there are strangers mere feet away. We feel pretty threatened and intimidated, some of us feel like prisoners in our own homes and myself included. When we left this morning for this meeting, the dad and his son were behind our homes and he was looking in again at us. And the quality of life and sense of peace and security to enjoy our own homes and our own property outside in our backyards, it seems to go downhill. We wouldn't think anyone in this room would want adult or teen strangers outside their windows staring in or watching you, invading your privacy. We welcome you to come to our HOA to see how close the bank of the pond is to our homes and windows. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Yeah, thank you for coming, we'll follow up with you, okay? I think we have contact information, okay? Thanks for sharing.
Thank you for having us.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay, moving on to, oh yeah, go ahead.
So I'm Thomas Kane, Cassie's wife, 17358 Elquid Avenue. I just want to emphasize that we are literally only 20 feet from the edge of the pond and it's continuously, they're staring in our homes, waving at us. It's very intru-, uh, it's violating our privacy of our home, we feel threatened by them. They're literally taking pictures of us in our own home and I don't think any one of you, anyone in this room would want any stranger or teenagers behind your home 20 feet in some of the homes on the map I provided some of you are less than 20 feet, taking pictures and video of you in your own home. So I really would like to emphasize, encourage, if there's something we can do to resolve this, whether it's no fishing on our half of the pond or maybe just no trespassing signs on our side of the pond. But something has to be done. We've called the police three times last week, including the other neighbors, just not us. So if there's anything I or we can do or, I mean, there's nothing we can do other than what Joe has encouraged us to continue to call the police. Well, the police come and they say, well, they're on Lakeville property, but they're not always on the Lakeville property as one of the pictures show, they're sitting on our land or walking across it as Cassie described in her, in her, what she was reading, that they frequently access our property to get to the edge of the pond. It's, we're here not because we're against kids fishing, we're here because it's violating our privacy, the quality of our life to the point where some of us are actually talking about moving and that's not how it should be. And if somebody else moves in, you're probably going to have the same problem. So thank you for hearing us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay. Additional agenda information, Mr. Miller?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. We'll now move on to presentations, introductions, and I will turn over to councilmember Lee to read their Together in Peace proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I could yield to the board of the Together in Peace group to say a couple of words about the upcoming event before I read this proclamation.
I'm Jennifer Thayer, the Communication Director, that's why they're pointing for me to go up. We are so pleased to be here and so pleased to have heard about the proclamation, we look forward to hearing it and we are so grateful for every one of you and as I look at many of you, we're participating and have talked with you and have planned with you and we're grateful for your support. We are having more people join us every day, it's really exciting. So we're thankful for this opportunity to be here and Tess will talk too.
Just say, thank you very much, we really do appreciate the support that we've gotten from community members, but also from the city of Lakeville, especially Joshua, has been amazing in helping us and supporting us and Luke, thank you. We really appreciate all the support we've gotten and the Rotary and Lions Clubs, everybody. Thank you.
Do you want to remind people of the date, time, location of the event?
Yes, May 17th at Casperson Park from 12 to 3.
Very good.
Thank you so much and we hope you'll all be there.
And I'm sure-
Coming together like this, we appreciate it, Joshua and everybody in here, so please do come, we have free food.
Meeting notes, we'll put them in the meeting notes. Councilmember Lee?
Appreciate that. One thing I will add is that in addition to May 17th from 12 to 3, there are performances, free food, booths to explore for kids, activities, so it's a full family event. So with that, City of Lakeville Proclamation for Together in Peace Day. Whereas the City of Lakeville recognizes the importance of fostering peace, mutual understanding and the belonging within our community and beyond. And whereas the United Nations has designated May 16th as the International Day of Living Together in Peace, encouraging people worldwide to promote values of peace, tolerance, belonging, understanding and solidarity. And whereas in alignment with this global initiative, the City of Lakeville seeks to establish Together in Peace Day as a local day of action and reflection, ensuring that all members of our community are respected and valued. And whereas the Lakeville Rotary Club is part of an international organization that values peace as a cornerstone of its mission, the installation of Rotary Peace Polls worldwide serves as a visible reminder of our shared hope for peace, bearing the message, may peace prevail on earth in multiple languages and locations. And whereas the City of Lakeville embraces the sense of belonging that comes from openness to others and believes in fostering strong relationships by honoring the rich cultural, religious and ethnic traditions that contribute to the strength and vibrancy of our community. And whereas peace building is a continuous effort that requires collaboration among residents, businesses, faith organizations, schools and civic groups, reflecting our collective commitment to unity and harmony. And whereas celebrating Together in Peace Day on May 17th, 2025 provides an opportunity for the community to come together in a meaningful way, reinforcing Lakeville's dedication to being a welcoming and inclusive city. Now therefore, the City of Lakeville and the City Council does hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 17th, 2025 shall be observed as Together in Peace Day in the City of Lakeville, proclaimed this 5th day of May 2025. Signed, Mayor Luke Kellyer.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, we'll look forward to seeing you guys on the 17th. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'll turn it over to councilmember Bermal for that.
City of Lakeville Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas May is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness about mental health issues, confront discrimination and promote understanding and resources for individuals living with mental health conditions. And whereas, mental health conditions are treatable and recovery is possible with access to appropriate care, support and resources. And whereas, 988 is a critical resource in our community to help people struggling with their mental health. And whereas, mental health awareness encourages us to take care of our own mental health and to reach out to friends and family who may be struggling. And whereas, we strive to create a culture of care that connects physical health with mental health and treats mental health care as a right. And whereas, by highlighting the importance of mental health, we empower individuals to seek support, find hope and create lasting change in their lives. And whereas, we want people to know that you are not alone, that even through a challenging times, there is hope. Now therefore, the Lakeville City Council does hereby proclaim that May shall be observed as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Lakeville, proclaimed this 5th day of May 2025 and signed by Mayor Luke Kellyer.
Thank you, Councilmember Bermal, appreciate that. Okay, moving on to item C is our Police Department quarterly report and I'll turn it over to our chief, Brad Paulson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I just, I would like to note that I had previously committed to the peace event on May 17th prior to the allure of food that was mentioned here, so don't misperceive my intentions when I'm there on that date, but looking forward to May 17th. Here tonight to present our quarter one report, I'm covering the months of January to March of this year. And as stated, the Lakeville Police Department exists to ensure an excellent quality of life in Lakeville by serving and protecting in a professional and innovative way. And I'm hopeful and confident you'll find plenty of examples of that as we move through the presentation tonight. Starting with some new faces in the Police Department, in January, we hired Melissa Rupert as a police officer. She comes to us from the Washington County Sheriff's Office. She was working as a correctional officer there for a number of years, also a member of the United States, United States Air Force Reserve and she is just winding down her field training portion right now. In addition, Nick Novo, formerly joined as a police officer in March, you may have seen Nick's picture up here before or heard his name. He was one of, or he was our first grant recipient on the IC Poet Grant, the Intensive Comprehensive Peace Officer Education and Training Grant, kind of a mouthful there, but again, that provides up to $50,000 reimbursement for an agency to employ this individual and pay for tuition at Hennepin County while they finish up schooling to become a police officer. So he has a, an education in criminal justice and Homeland Security Emergency Management, as you can see there, but had some hurdles to getting that, kind of the final step to being licensed. So he is in our field training program now and doing well. A promotion in March, Tom Danielson was officially promoted to Sergeant. He's been with Lakeville PD for 14 years, spent four years with the Prairie Island Tribal Police before that. Tom has a number of those years as a K-9 handler, we had Kilo in here back in March in recognition of his service. Tom's been a union steward for a number of years and as you can see on the bottom bullet there, he's trained at least, to our count, 25 officers as a field training officer. So if someone's going to make a stamp on an organization, that's a great way to do it, bringing in new hires and getting them trained and onboard in those first several months. So he's had his hand in a lot of those. And as mentioned before, Kilo posing so nicely there for his retirement photo, serving nine years with Lakeville, last official day was March 2nd, he will continue to live with his handler, Sergeant Danielson. Sergeant Danielson lives on a nice property with a lot of room to run and Kilo's had plenty of time to do that and has enjoyed not going into work the next day, so enjoying retirement. Circling back to our grant program, so Nick Novo was our first, we have two more going through the program right now. Josh Enavold and Megan Karp were hired and started school at Hennepin County Technical College the end of February. They will wrap up school at the end of July or they will jump into our field training program from there. Megan comes with a criminal justice degree from St. Cloud State, but had been working in the retail and hospitality interest, industry prior to joining us. And Josh has a business management and administration degree from Minnesota State Mankato, so looking forward to getting those two through school and back onboard, or getting up onboard with us in field training. Some of our community engagement outreach events in the first quarter of 2025, on the upper left there, you see Officer Samantha Hagford, she was doing a presentation at a senior facility for some scam awareness and took some fellowship time at the end to have some conversation and enjoy some pictures. The bottom left was an event, kind of a spontaneous thing we did with our senior community at the Heritage Center where we delivered some roses around Valentine's Day and surprised a group with that, took some nice pictures there. In the upper right, moving on to our younger generation, middle school students that came to the Police Department on a tour as a part of the Treats, Trades and Tours Program is a partnership between the Lakeville Chamber and Community Education where these middle school students move around at different professions and vocations throughout the city to learn a little bit more and maybe steer a career interest. And then on the bottom right, we staffed a booth at the Home Landscape and Community Show at Lakeville North High School back in March, which was very well attended this year, as you've probably heard. Many of you were there, but our first center official groundbreaking was on March 17th, so excited to take that next step with our facility, a lot of police and fire and other city folks on hand at that event. It's a, it's a little misleading, it was more of a demolition at the outset than a groundbreaking, but the building is now down and the ground has been broke, so fun for our staff to see that progress getting made a little bit more tangibly now than, than it was just in the design phase. Training and development in the first quarter, I won't read all these, I'm going to hit on just a few of the bullet points, the phlebotomy I'll talk about on a specific arrest here in a couple of slides. Our SWAT training, you'll see that listed nearly every month. Again, we're part of the South Metro Regional SWAT Team, we have currently three operators. We have a fourth one joining in the next couple of months and a negotiator that are on that team and they train, have a standing monthly training date. Our Field Training Officer School, just like Sergeant Danielson, we have a lot of new people coming through the, through the door to become police officers, so we're always looking to train new officers in becoming FDOs or field training officers, specifically on nights. Defensive tactics and service training, so some of the skills that are, that we don't utilize a lot for good reason, use of force, firearms, defensive tactics, but when you need them, you need to be spot on. We've taken an approach to take little snippets of time each month to work on those to kind of just knock the rust off to make sure we stay sharp. We obviously do full training days on all those throughout the year, but when we can't get everybody together for a full day, we've been breaking that down into smaller blocks just to keep those skills sharp. Excuse me. And on the top there, the Storm Defensive Tactics, Train the Trainer, that's training instructors to become instructors for the rest of our staff, so getting a few of them certified to instruct the rest of us. Then on the bottom, one thing that sometimes gets overlooked a little bit and people don't know that we do, we have certified armors for both our handguns and rifles, so they do annual inspections, but also zeroing in, making sure those firearms stay certainly operational and zeroed in, you know, in squad cars, getting carried around, bounced around, they need to be checked routinely and we have in-house staff that, that is, that are able to do that and we appreciate, appreciate the work that they put into that. Highlighting three cases here, and I think these are all a little bit unique that show different components of our Police Department kind of working together. The top one there is a DWI arrest that I mentioned with the phlebotomy, that's a pretty standard traffic stop for an equipment violation. The driver was believed to be impaired, possibly with a controlled substance. The standardized field sobriety tests were failed, the driver was arrested, a search warrant was obtained to obtain that driver's blood. And our in-house phlebotomist, it's an officer that's trained in phlebotomy, the ability to draw blood pursuant to that search warrant, she was able to do that. The blood results get sent into the state lab for analysis and then those results come back down the road and it came back, in this case, positive for cannabis, but just a way to make things a little bit more efficient out there on the road. Without that phlebotomist, if she's not working or not available, that person has to be transported up to a hospital. As you can imagine, a lot of evenings, weekends, that's a busy place to be and so we can take that burden off medical services and do that work on our end and makes it faster all the way around. The middle incident there is a theft that came in, a pretty unique, or I'm sorry, a pretty routine scenario, but a little bit unique in some of the items, but this came in from an out-of-state agency regarding a furniture store that made a delivery. The person that they believed placed that order canceled the order right after it was delivered, said they never paid for it or never made the order. So investigation led to the fact that these folks' identity were stolen, their credit cards were used fraudulently. We were able to obtain an address where the furniture was shipped to, did a little work with our detective group, actually served a search warrant on the apartment complex and seized, seized some furniture, which we don't do every day. But in that apartment was several other victims, names, identities, credit card numbers, social security numbers, so opened up a bigger case there. And so sometimes those smaller cases, we can't always get to all of them, but when we can and we have the nexus to do so, it can sometimes open up a little bit bigger, bigger investigation. So good work by our investigative staff on that one. And then the bottom one, my detective history, I get kind of excited about some of these, but I want to highlight this one because it really involves a lot of components of our Police Department, but the actual incident here occurred back in November of 2024, this was a burglary, a residential burglary, where someone entered a home in town during the middle of the night. People were home at the, residents were home at the time, they stole vehicle keys, stole a vehicle out of the garage. The homeowners didn't notice this until morning, obviously called 911 to report it. Our patrol officers did a great job of identifying some, some tracks in the snow. Our crime scene unit folks were out there doing some photographs, our drone team was tracking these tracks from a, from a higher level. They followed these tracks to another vehicle that had been dumped there a few blocks away that was reported stolen out of another community. Turns out that was stolen in a burglary probably hours before ours. But then the investigation really kind of started from there and our detectives did a really nice job with our investigative, I'm sorry, with our electronics crime unit to locate the vehicle. It was dumped, the Lakeville stolen was dumped in another jurisdiction. They did some computer analysis on the vehicle's computer, figured out a phone that had been connected to that vehicle about the time of the burglary, identified a suspect, compared some of those suspect known photos to surveillance video of those credit cards, stolen credit cards being used in other jurisdictions and really put this whole case together through the use of search warrants, electronic crimes and then good old fashioned detective work. And we now have two suspects in custody on first degree burglary charges, so really good work by our team all the way around on that one. And what doesn't get often mentioned, but behind the scenes and after the fact is our records technicians putting all of this together to get ready for prosecution and charging. There's a lot of information and work that they do on the backend that is not seen by the public too often. Just getting into some of our statistics for quarter one, our case numbers, these are incident reports actually filed, we're down about 1,500 in the quarter one of 2025 versus 2024. We don't go down in categories too often. It's Mental Health Awareness Month, as mentioned in the proclamation, and this is a look at calls that go into Dakota 911 that get routed to our Crisis Response Unit, our countywide unit. So these calls are specific to Lakeville on this chart in this slide. On quarter one, we had 35 of those calls that came in, 31 of those were resolved through crisis without Lakeville PD involvement, so 89%. We've been seeing about an 80% rate, has been pretty normal across the county and that's really great to see, so we're right onboard with those numbers. Sometimes when you see a spike like you do in January, that can be one individual, it's maybe struggling a little bit with multiple calls or an event, a triggering event that generates several calls. Calls for service overall in parentheses up above there, 14,200 in 2025 versus 13,5 a year ago. And again, we dial in a little bit more on the mental health related ones with our welfare checks, so calls overall going up, but good to see our welfare check and crisis mental health calls ticking down just a little bit year over year. And then when we look a little bit more at the traffic side of things, our traffic stop numbers were down just a little bit, both property damage and personal injury crashes, those are all types of injuries are up a little bit. Wintertime, we can get some spikes with a weather event, can really pile up, unfortunately, crashes in a hurry, a lot of those are property damage fortunately, but we do get the injury ones as a result of that as well. And then just a comparison with our Dakota 911 numbers to some of our neighboring agencies, just a little bit below Eagan there, above both Burnsville and Apple Valley. And some of our fences that we report on quarterly here, driving under the influence arrests were up significantly in quarter one. I think that's a lot, I'm not saying there's more impaired drivers out there, I think it's just been a more proactive approach that we've been able to take in quarter one with some traffic enforcement details, things like that. Assaults are aggravated assaults up just a couple, other assaults not involving weapons or serious injuries are down. Now I'll just note on the weapons violations, those are small numbers which are good, but those are calls involving weapons that don't fit into any other category. So it's a little bit misleading to think we only had one weapon related call in 2025 in the first quarter, certainly more that had weapons involved, but that didn't fit into another crime category. And then finally, just some snapshots of our social media, on the left there is our Citizens Academy graduation, I think we had about 15 graduates back in March, so a photograph of their group there. School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, in the middle of February, my eyes won't let me see exactly which day, but I see February there, so we appreciate their work in the schools. And then Happy Pie Day, March 14th, some willing participants there to get their photo taken, eating some pie. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Very good, Chief, any questions, comments from the council? Joshua?
Just, I don't want to take, I don't want to waste an opportunity to publicly thank you and the department. I mean, the quarterly reports always showcase all the things that you're doing and I know that there's a lot of work that's still not shown here, so just sincere thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bermal?
Yeah, likewise, appreciate all your hard work. The DWI case with the phlebotomist officer is, I think that highlights a couple of things. The innovation, because without that officer, with that training, those can be long arrests and that shows wise use of, of time and dollars, plus it gives somebody an opportunity. And I couldn't help but notice and I really appreciated that that all started with enforcement of an equipment violation. And those are important and they keep our roads safe, so I appreciate the officers out there looking for equipment violations and ways to keep our roads safe and I would encourage them to keep doing that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Excuse me. These are more routine items in front of the council, is there any- These are more routine items in front of the council, is there anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor, two items tonight, Item 6F is a MOU or a Memorandum of Understanding, this is with the Teamsters, specifically our parks maintenance staff, who will be doing a trial standby period this summer to help those after-hours calls that come in, we saw uptick in that last year, especially with antlers, and so we're excited to try that out for the summer. And Item 6L is a resolution accepting a grant from the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation, this is a $4,000 grant and is going toward the Police Department for a wellness initiative, and we're thankful for them for that donation.
We are thankful, very good. Council, any items you want to pull for further discussion, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? See, none of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. With that, we'll move on to 789, Unfinished and New Business, anything the council, oh, okay, very good. With that, our next regular City Council meeting is May 19th here at City Hall, and our work session is May 27th. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.